Good evening and welcome to the September two thousand twenty-four Town of Poughkeepsie Zoning Board of Appeals session. If you'd all please rise to pledge your allegiance. Christine?
Here.
Art?
Here.
Phyllis?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Tony G?
Here.
Leighton?
Here.
And Tony S?
Here.
Okay, we have a full board unless there's a recusal, our alternate may not be going tonight. For any of you unfamiliar with the process here before the Town of Poughkeepsie Zoning Board of Appeals, there's an agenda up here. Each item will be taken in its order on the agenda. The applicant will come forward, be sworn, and describe their application. The board may have questions of the applicant, and then the community is welcome to make comments about the application. There are people here in the audience, and there are also individuals on Zoom. Typically, we take the people in the audience first. When you want to speak or if you want to make a comment about an application, just press, raise the hand or indicate in some other way that you want to speak, and you'll be allowed to speak. And so, we'll take item number one, five sixty-six Vassar Road. Can you just state your names?
Let's do that one more time, sorry.
Jennifer Sova?
Yeah, we're.
Jennifer, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, why don't you describe the application?
So, we are here to get approval for a permit for a fence with a six-foot variance on our property line. It's going to be on Vassar and Mount Rose Terrace, just if you look at the survey that was provided on that corner.
Okay, that's part of the record, right, the survey? And you want to put the fence on the property line?
Yes.
And what about where the driveway is? How far back will the fence be going into the backyard?
By the driveway on that side. We don't necessarily need a fence there. At this time, we're really focusing on Mount Rose Terrace to the driveway and on Vassar Road to the tree line where our property ends.
Okay. All right, and why do you need six feet?
Well, because my toddler can climb a three-foot fence. She climbs everything. Also, that wouldn't provide the amount of privacy and protection that I'm looking for, which is the whole purpose of this permit request.
Okay, and do you have an idea what kind of fence you want to put up?
We were gonna do a nice white vinyl.
I don't have any questions. Christine?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions.
Art?
I do, let me borrow your paper. So... So, on your north side of the property against the tree line, you want it to be six feet all the way out to the Vassar Road?
Yes.
Pretty much. And then you still want it to do six feet all the way around the property to the driveway?
Yes, to keep it matching. So, it's all consistent around the property?
So, you're telling, you're saying that the child will climb a three-foot fence? A three-foot vinyl fence?
She could. She does really impressive things for a two-year-old.
But in reality, you could survive with a three-foot illegal fence if you had to?
Um, also, that aside, the privacy factor. So, when I'm in my yard, people will drive by, and you can look right down into the yard because the road's kind of above. So, you can look right into the yard. So, I don't believe a three-foot fence would provide that privacy that we're looking for.
Just so the record's clear, it's three and a half feet.
Okay.
That's what's allowed.
Right. Forty inches. So, the privacy issue, again, coming down Vassar Road, there's not a whole lot of, from our trip, I didn't see a whole lot of gradient between the two properties. This is the, this is the front yard?
Yes.
So, the privacy, wouldn't that be more critical in the backyard?
We don't really have a backyard. That's why we want the fence for the front yard. Majority of our property is on the side of the house closest to the tree line and then the front yard. So, basically, the, we have two front yards, I think, was what?
Right, you have Mount Rose, Mount Rose Terrace and Vassar Road are your front yards.
Yeah.
But against the wood line is your side slash backyard, right?
Uh-huh.
And then behind the driveway is your backyard?
That, yeah, that goes down, so it's not really a flat surface.
Okay, thank you.
Phyllis?
Um... So, you would put the fence behind the trees that are already there, close to the road?
Yeah.
Those trees would stay?
Well, those aren't tech duds in the easement, I believe.
Okay.
So, that's technically not our property. So, we want it on our property line. So, those trees could remain there. That's not really anything that we have any preference on. We could take, we could have them removed. You know, that's not, right now, it's good because it creates privacy for the majority of our yard, but if we were to have the fence, they could be taken down, which I think would be beneficial because it would make it easier for visibility when you're coming out, because those trees kind of grow into the road a little bit. So, if we had the fence, then those trees could be removed, which I think would be better for drivers.
Have you thought of anything to do? Should you be approved for the fence to screen the fence, or would you expect the fence to just be fencing, or would you put something in front of the fence?
No, I would expect just the fence. I mean, I hadn't really thought more about that, to be honest with you.
Okay, I have no other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Larry?
How long have you lived in the house?
We just moved in March.
Tony?
No questions.
So, the fence you want is just on Vassar and Mount Rose?
Yes.
Maybe up to the driveway?
Yeah.
So, the code prohibits fences more than three and a half feet in the front yard, with the exception that so long as it doesn't go past the front lot line, or thirty feet from, in the setback. So, you could have a six-foot fence at that thirty-foot mark. I, I had to tell you that the board frowns upon enclosing lots like this. So, I understand what you want to do, and there's a way to accomplish that, but not on the property line. So, tell me why that would be a problem for you?
Well, we don't have a lot of property to begin with, so I feel like we'd be losing a lot of our property. Would there be a way where we could have the six-foot fence on Vassar and then possibly a three-foot fence on Mount Rose, because Mount Rose isn't as busy? If that would be a compromise? I mean, I prefer the six-foot where I would like it, but if that's an issue as far as that goes, I just would like to not have to lose any more property with this.
Can I ask a question? I don't usually, on these kind of projects, but just, would you consider doing a six-foot fence just to, along Vassar Road, but to the point where it lines up with the front of your house, the, the front-facing Mount Rose Terrace, right? And then coming down, and if you still want to bring a fence around the rest of the way, you know, at least on the corner, then it would be lower, and, and along Mount Rose Terrace, it would be lower. I mean, that's, that was another thought. You know, aesthetically, that might work a little better. I don't know.
I'm sorry, so you're saying have the six-foot fence from the tree line to the front of the house, and then drop it down to a three-foot, and then around Mount Rose Terrace? Is that what you're saying?
Three and a half, yeah, to, you know, to, around the rest of the way, yeah. But basically, to, you know, so that the corner isn't at six feet, it's, it's really, it's the section along Vassar Road pretty much until the front of the house.
So, would that be the front of the house closest to Mount Rose Terrace for the six-foot?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I'm trying to, to, I'm sorry.
Okay, and then right, right before it reaches the corner, have it drop down to a three-foot, and then wrap around Mount Rose at a three-foot?
Yeah, I mean, would that work?
Um, would that be okay? If we have a six-foot on Vassar up until the house to the corner, and then drop it down to a three-foot and wrap around?
Like?
Yeah.
Don't you mean that, like, where that forty-eight or forty-nine, forty-eight foot mark is?
Yeah.
I don't think she's understanding what you're saying.
Yeah.
I think she went further.
So, you have the survey in front of you?
Yes, I am, looking at it.
So, see where the dotted line that goes from the corner of the house to Vassar Road?
Yeah.
Forty-nine point eight?
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's where he's talking about?
Yeah, that, yeah, I understand that, mm-hmm.
But let me, let me ask you this. Can you do something less than six feet all the way? I mean, is there a reason you're picking six feet? Is that just because of the size of the fence that you picked out?
Yes. I think that that, is that the fence that you're looking at, six-foot fence? Yeah, that.
I, I appreciate that he's got the babies, but if, if he wants to have input into this.
He, he was just saying that he would prefer to have the six-foot fence all around because he has seen traffic being rerouted through Mount Rose Terrace if there's an accident on Vassar Road. That's what he was saying. Route nine, that's true. That did just happen.
Wow. Did you have a question?
You mentioned something less than?
Yes.
Than six feet. So, I mean, I, I think that would be a, that would be something we could consider, maybe something that's not completely solid, also like a solid white vinyl fence where it, it looks like, you know, a total enclosure.
The reason behind the law is that they don't want properties to look like a compound that's walled off. So, if you were to propose either an open fence, a lower fence, or something alternate, but from what I'm hearing from the board, it doesn't sound like they're going to grant you a six-foot vinyl enclosed all the way around.
So, if I could get higher than three and a half feet, maybe possibly five?
Well, before we agree to something, why don't, why don't you find out what, what's available to you? I don't want to, I don't want to agree to something that you can't accommodate.
As far as fence options go?
Yeah.
Um, well, my husband had only advised of the six-foot vinyl fence, so unfortunately, I'm not prepared to present an alternative at this time for that.
So, my, my suggestion to you perhaps is if you want to do a little more research about what fences would come into what, what sounds like we might be willing to authorize, to, to, to grant, that, that might be helpful to you.
Okay.
Are you in a big hurry?
I'm sorry?
Are you in a big, I mean, are you in a hurry?
Well, I mean, I would like to have it done before it gets cold, because then it makes it more difficult to install the fence if the ground's frozen. So, um, but I see what you're saying. So, essentially, you would not grant a six-foot fence the way that we're asking it?
I think that that would be unlikely.
Okay. So, a compromise, would that be a three-foot fence on Mount Rose Terrace, and then the lower fence on Vassar Road? Because Vassar Road is really my main concern.
I think probably we, we could agree to a lower fence all the way on both sides.
On both sides, okay.
I think that we would agree to that.
All right. So, if we were able to perhaps find a fence that was five feet?
I was thinking four, but you, see what you, what you can come up with.
It could be in the middle and be five. Okay, so you essentially are saying that you wouldn't grant the six-foot vinyl fence, but you would be willing to grant a four-foot fence, no higher than that?
I think so. Sorry. Okay. I, why don't you come back with some alternatives?
Okay.
And we'll, we'll see. But I'm, I'm pretty sure the six-foot fence would not be granted, all the way around would not be granted.
Okay.
Yes.
Question, I'm sorry. I've got two questions, if I may. Okay.
Okay, I tell you, we, we really frown upon corner lots being enclosed in fences like that, because it, it makes it like it's a compound, just, and kind of really changes the nature of the, of the neighborhood. I appreciate that what you're looking for is privacy and security. I appreciate all those things. But it's, it's a corner lot, and the code attempts to avoid that sort of look. If you're gonna, if you're gonna speak on the record, why don't you come on and be sworn in? All right, but, and if you want to take care of the baby, or?
Yeah, there you go. And, yeah, let me grab her somewhere.
Okay.
She wants to speak.
So, I'm sorry. Yeah, she wants to speak too.
You can sit, you can sit in the other chair, but just state your name.
All right. Oh, my name is Fred Ansova, five sixty-six Vassar Road.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, what would you like to say?
So, I spoke to Meredith, who is my neighbor next door to me. She said that she received a notice from the town, which would be you guys, about what I was trying to do. And she personally said she did not care. Also, she said that she talked to Dave. She's been in the neighborhood a lot longer than we have, obviously, and they both agreed that they would not really care about me having a fence, six-foot vinyl fence on the corner lot.
Okay.
So, I mean, just to put that into record.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll consider that.
I understand, I guess it's, you know, your code, that for some reason it would make it look like a compound, but I don't personally agree with that. I think it would be beneficial for my family, so that's pretty much it.
Okay. So, let me, let me ask you this. Are, are you willing to look at alternatives that you can bring back to us that we might be able to agree or grant, or do you want us to make a ruling tonight? Let me, let me give you a hint.
Okay.
You should look at other alternatives for something we would grant to help you out.
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah, I mean, ideally, I would like, like I said, a six-foot vinyl fence around, you know, the two streets that, you know, we don't have a backyard, so we don't really have other options for them to play, other than the front yard, which is Vassar, and the side. I don't know if she's, you know, brought that up, but.
No, we've all been there and, and looked at it.
Okay, so, I mean, you understand, I guess.
I do.
Yeah.
And I, and I want to help you out.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking that the six-foot fence is not probably going to work for you.
Okay.
I'm suggesting that you come up with other alternatives that could, that could work for you.
What would, what would you recommend? What other alternatives do I have?
If you can find a fence that's not as high.
Okay. Find a fence that's not as high?
So, you suggested, uh?
Or something, I suggested the, the board might go along with something that's more open and not just that closed-off white vinyl fence.
Okay, so something slotted?
That might work, if you want to come back with some alternatives that we can look at.
Right, something that doesn't make it look so walled off, and then you always have the opportunity for privacy to put, you know, plantings on either side of the fence. Well, if it's on the property line, you could only put them on your side, but you can always, you know, put plantings. But if the fence were not, you know, opaque with no light going through it, that's what the board's suggesting. So, you have that option, and I think that either standing alone or in combination with a lower fence might be something that the board would be amenable to, but until they have something to look at that's in the record, they really can't make a determination.
Okay. So, today, right now, you guys are basically disagreeing on a six-foot vinyl fence?
I'm saying, I, I think today, if we were to vote, it would be unlikely that it would be granted.
That's right, okay. That's what I'm getting at. Okay. So, all right.
Yeah, well, we'll look at options.
Yeah.
And then we'll bring those in, not six-foot.
So, come up with a couple different things, something lower.
Okay, something lower.
Something lower, and perhaps something more open.
Okay. So, something lower and slotted, you're recommending?
What, yes.
Okay.
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 If I, I think the key is the thought of the plantings. I think that that would be the medium ground, the middle ground. The plantings would be helpful because then it would help you deal with the slots.
Yeah.
And you'd have the privacy that you're requesting.
I agree as well. I just, when I got my property staked out, I noticed that, you know, the easement was pretty far from the road into my property already. So, now, you know, I'm also going to put shrubs there and lose more property. So, you know, I'm trying to have as much property as I already have, or already lost, I guess you could say, then.
Could I ask you to describe the proper, the, the layout of the property?
Yes.
On this side, because there's this big square behind the house. Is that, is that wooded and not lay appropriate with?
Are you talking about, where is it, South forty-one eleven, East and one eighteen twenty-three?
This piece.
This right here.
Yeah, so that, so that is, yes, and next to that is wetlands.
So, the property kind of goes down, and then it goes into the wooded wetlands. So, it's not even, it's downward, it's not flat?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you, that's.
And, and I mean, that's where, you know, we have most of our children's toys already. So, you know, it's, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, go ahead.
Now, I'm totally confused. Let me, let me ask it this way. So, if you're looking at Vassar Road, right?
Yep.
If you look at the west of the most, the, the property that's up against the tree line, or the northerly, I'm sorry, the northern end of the property, that's up against your tree line, your forty-one eleven east?
Yep.
Is that going to be a fence, or is that not going to be a fence?
Okay, so that's not going to be a fence. When I first applied for a fence, I was told that if I wanted to eventually have a fence around my whole property, that I would just do the, do it, get one permit in one shot, that my backyard and the tree line would not be a variance, but the front yard and the, up against Vassar Road and Mount Rose Terrace would have to require variance. I came here today just saying that I would really like a six-foot vinyl fence along Mount Rose Terrace and Vassar Road.
And then forty-eight, forty-nine is also not a fence?
Hmm, no, no fence. That's our backyard, that's up against our neighbors.
Yeah.
One other question?
Yes.
Two other questions, I'm sorry. Would you consider anything other than white vinyl? Because that really makes it look like a compound. If you go up, if you go further up from Hackitack Road through Red Oaks Mill, and you look at a house up there across from the old Paulus, Craft's Row Pub, whatever it is, you'll see, I think, what we're talking about if you look at that piece of property.
Okay.
It's totally fenced in with white vinyl, and it's pretty rough on the eyes.
So, that's something like, aesthetically, it's not, not pleasing?
Not really.
So, the, the impact is more visible in that, so?
Okay.
There are, there are other fencing, six-foot fencing and, and lower, that is, doesn't have the same impact?
I mean, I, I wouldn't mind doing, you know, wood, picket wood.
Would that be more sedentary?
Okay. And that's my, that's my suggestion, to come up with some alternatives.
I think, like I said, our goal here today is, we found, I found a full beer can that was thrown into my yard.
Yeah.
I find garbage, I find a whole bunch of things, you know. It's, a six-foot fence would be, for us, perfect, and vinyl, it doesn't have to be vinyl. I can do wood, I can, I'm going to install it myself, you know. So, I'm not sold on the construction of the material. So, if wood would be more pleasing or better for you guys, then I would not mind wood.
Okay. So, my suggestion is that you come up with some alternatives that are lower, and some alternatives that are different than vinyl.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And I'm going to suggest that you requested a adjournment until next, next month. Is enough time for you?
Um, yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I'll discuss with my wife, and, you know, everything's obviously a whirlwind right now, so. So, but, yeah, I'll discuss with my wife, and then we can come back in a month, and, yeah.
What's the, what's, Sonya, what's the next date?
October twenty-first.
Twenty-first?
October?
Yeah.
October twenty-first?
Yeah.
Okay. So, ideally, I would like to get this done before, you know, any type of frost or it gets too cold. So, I think October twenty-first is kind of the deadline.
Okay.
For me.
That's our next meeting, so.
Okay. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, then I'm going to move to adjourn this to the October twenty-first meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. What date do they have to have, Sonya? What date do they have to have all that information submitted?
Twenty-seventh September.
Twenty-seventh September?
Seems a little late.
That seems a little early, though. Are you sure that's right? Why don't, why don't, why don't you reach out to Sonya tomorrow, and she'll have the calendar? Yeah, okay, that, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item number two, Vassar College. The board had, the town board has extended the moratorium, so I'm going to move that we adjourn that. Do you think December, January, what?
The public hearing isn't until the end of February, so I would suggest the March tenth meeting.
March tenth? Okay, so I'll move to adjourn this to March tenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Wow.
This is number two?
I'm sorry?
Number two?
Yes.
Number two. Was there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to item number three. It's shops at Campus Center. I think Dave requested an adjournment because they still don't have the information. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then adjourn that to the October twenty-one?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to item number four, Adam Silverman, twenty-one Fairmont Avenue. Okay, why don't you state your name?
Adam Silverman.
Okay, you're still under oath. So, since our last meeting, you, you were kind enough to draw out on the property where you want to sign?
Right.
And, and submit some renderings. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Remember that I'm recusing myself.
I did.
Thank you.
Um, tell me this, is, is there a reason that you're, that you decided on a monument-type sign?
Um, I mean, just because it looks nicer, I think. It's just not, um, doesn't just look like a board and, you know, two stakes in the ground and a board across. It just looks nicer. I also think that if you were to do kind of two posts and, um, I guess you could, maybe the same dimensions, I just don't think it would look nice.
Okay.
I also wanted to, I think I stated this before, you know, the, the monument is going to be built out of the same material that was used for the, 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 the front landing, as well as the staircase, so all in continuity of what's there, what's there already.
Okay, Christine, questions?
So, hon, when we went to visit the site, you have two different sets of lines, so you, you would be willing to have something smaller? The, the lines, you know, going inside the lines that are inside, is that correct?
The, the out, the out, outside is the original plan, ten by, uh, ten by six. So then I basically shrunk it down half, half a foot on each side, so then it's nine by, nine by five. Now, the only issue with, well, one of the issues with going down to, um, a width of nine is the actual monument posts. The, the cap on top is twenty-four inches, um, and when I talked to the contractor, he basically said that, uh, you know, he would have to cut all those down, which would be a lot more money to cut, actually cut down the caps to make that monument, um, smaller. Now, you could make the in-between the signs smaller, however, then you're decreasing the amount of sign spacers. There's only three feet, if I do, you know, three feet on each side, then we're decreasing it to two and a half feet for each sign. And there's got to be a border in between the left and the right, so then you're decreasing it to like two feet per sign.
Thank you, that's all.
Art?
And then the, on page six, I guess it is, the, uh, the height of the base?
Yeah, so one of, one of the other things I was thinking that, I, I think there was a little bit of an issue of, of it being too tall. So one of the things I thought of is actually cutting off half a foot and making the, uh, making everything just lower, lower profile, so that it's closer to the ground. Um, so the, uh, you know, the, where the flower bed would be, you know, instead of, I think it's two, it's like three, um, three stones high, you know, it's high, so that would be, instead of a foot and a half, that would basically bring it down to a foot, um, which would obviously decrease the, the side, the, the monument height also down to five and a half. But when I took pictures from, uh, from Fairmont's going south, you know, I put, I tried to put the, you know, the garbage can in there, so it was some kind of deterrent of, you know, so that there was some blockage there, so you can kind of get an idea of if it would be in the way. You know, in my opinion, it's not in the way of the stop sign, it's not in the way of the, of the, um, intersection, it's not in the way of the people seeing on Davis. Um, you can see the fire hydrant that's on Davis through that also. So I don't really think that the, uh, you know, this, this signage really interferes with the traffic flow as well, in my opinion.
One, I think for me, one last question right now. How about, are you going to, are you going to have this lit at night?
So I think I kind of alluded to that last time, is I wanted to try to get this approved first, and then deal with, deal with lighting at a later time. Um, because I know I'm asking for a lot with variances and stuff like that, so, yeah, I think, you know, it'd be nice to have it lit. Um, I understand that there's, uh, you know, um, uh, codes for that also, can't be, you know, lighting up everything, but it'd be, my intention at a later date would be to, you know, light up that sign, you know, not backlit, but, uh, to have something that's shooting right onto the sign. Or down.
Down would be better.
Right, down is always better.
Yes.
Um, that's all for now, thank you.
Okay?
No questions.
Oh, okay. Um, Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No question.
Linda?
I, I actually have a question. Um, since this is a professional building, you're going to have whatever, whatever you call it, a care building, you're going to have an individual tenant. Is there even a, do you even need a sign when people, you know, if you go to a doctor's office and it's in a professional plaza, your doctor's office would say, you know, the name of the professional plaza, the address, and they would be giving that in, information to their clients? So do, you know, is there even really a need for the type, uh, any sign for the building, other than a sign that would say what the building name is and maybe the address?
Well, I mean, I, you know, I think one of the purposes of a sign is advertising. Hundred percent. Any sign out there is advertising your business. So I have, there's my business that's on the bottom floor, and there's potentially, uh, six businesses upstairs. And, you know, that area is, people move, people are moving to the Arlington Business District because of the area, right? So they want to be able to advertise their business. And I think it's very important that they're, they're able to. I want to, I want to advertise my business, right? I want people to know where I'm at. I want people to know that I'm not in the city of Poughkeepsie anymore. I want people to know that I moved from the city to my new location because of my location. I want people to know that, okay? Yes, I can just put up a, a sign that says twenty-one Fairmont. I can guarantee I won't put that sign up because it's a waste of money. There's no reason for me to put up a monument sign that just says twenty-one Fairmont Avenue.
Well, no, I was thinking even with, without a monument sign, if your building was named, and your tenants had that as part of their address, like, um, you had New Beginnings, let's say, New Beginnings, uh, and I'm using the name of a building that exists, Chandler Building and twenty-one Fairmont as part of their, their address, and on their car, business cards, and.
Oh, yeah, my, my business cards have my address on it, too. Every, you know, all the people that are upstairs are going to have it on their cards.
Right, so when their clients call them and they give their address, they would have the name of the building as well. I mean, I, that's just my, my question.
Yeah, that's, I mean, yeah, but I don't know, why would, why would any, why would any business put a sign out if they can't put their, their name out in their building?
I'm saying you wouldn't put a sign, the building would have the name of, you know, the name of the building and the name of the.
Right, so my original office was, uh, two forty-six North Road, right in front of St. Francis Hospital. I didn't have a sign out front, right? Or I, actually I did, but, I mean, it was multi, multi-disciplined, you know? So again, it's advertising every business. You know, it wasn't called, now it's, Premier took over that whole building, so now they have a huge sign out there that says Premier Medical. Right? Versus when I was there ten years ago, Dr. Budnik had a suite, um, all these people had different suites, so all those people had to have signs out front, because it wasn't just known as two forty-six, everybody had a business there. So I, I think it's important for the people that are renting space for me to be able to say, this is where my business is, I'm at twenty-one Fairmont Avenue, in Arlington.
That's all I have.
Tony?
I don't have any questions.
Tell me this, do you know what, where the property lines are?
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a one and a half feet from the sidewalk into the property.
Okay, so you think that this side fits within your property?
Yeah, because we put it back four feet. That's where the, uh, the, the ten-foot one is four feet, so the, the, the one that's in far there would be, you know, three and a half feet, uh, excuse me, four and a half feet from, from the, from the sidewalk.
Okay. Any?
Yes. One more, one more question. I only have one more, you know that. The, uh, the sign panels, are they going to be painted on, or are they going to be removable? So if, if ABC Biz moves out, does that just come off and you put another one on?
So my original concept was to basically have a bar that came down and have a chain with each individual sign, uh, that came down. That was the, uh, original picture that I had, I had sent, um, and I thought this was clearer of, of putting a sign up there. Pr- I, and the reason why I wanted to do that is because I thought it'd be easier for me to just, okay, this person moves out, I just change out that sign. Instead of, um, I use, I would use fast signs for this, that's what I use for the, the signs. Instead of them having to come out and actually take off ABC Business and then put another one on, because I think, uh, I don't know the prices, but I think it's going to be more labor-intensive, I'm going to have to spend more money doing that.
Good, thanks.
Does that, does that matter, what, what the actual sign looks like in the middle?
It, it goes into our consideration, I suppose. Uh, anyone from the public who wish to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience, anyone on Zoom?
Can I bring up one other thing?
Yes.
If you don't mind. Um, in the, in one of the other emails I sent was to put, like, the number twenty-one on the actual pillar, so that it gives an address. Um, so that was in there, that was in one of the pictures I sent also. So it'd be nice to be able to put the number twenty-one on there. And one of the other things I thought about, and again, this goes back to lighting, if you could do a, um, like a backlit one, so not a bright thing, but lights behind the actual twenty-one. So it just illuminates the twenty-one basically. But it's not, let me rephrase that, the twenty-one is not illuminated, it's behind it that's illuminated.
Okay, that's a question for a different day.
Bye.
Anything else? All right, anyone of, on Zoom who wish to comment on this application? I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. And then you can either wait till the end of the meeting, or you can find out tomorrow from the zoning administrator.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
That brings us to item number five. There's an interpretation, mechanical parking structures, fifty-three Salt Point Turnpike. Is there somebody here for that application?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board, Jeff Kane.
Mr. Kane, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Why don't you describe the application?
Sure, this is, um, simultaneously complex and I think pretty straightforward. Um, it, it seems more complex than, than it is, but, um, the, uh, as this project is proceeded through the planning board, the zoning administrator, um, issued an opinion that the, uh, what we have is some proposed mechanical parking, uh, because mechanical parking structures are not defined in the town code and the zoning code, and not listed as permitted use or an accessory use, they're therefore not permitted. So, um, what is, what is this mechanical parking? All right, so the, um, uh, as part of the, the, the planning board process, the, the town asked that we look at adding, um, have a potential for adding additional parking in the future, and, um, the applicant here, uh, has, um, in other areas, um, uh, proposed and had approved a mechanical parking structure that allows a car to be essentially moved, uh, to double stack the, the cars. And I, I have both, I think, photos and, uh, and, and some site plans involved in the, in the application. So you have really two cars where normally you would, you would have one, but it is, it is a mechanical parking structure because the car gets lifted above the, uh, above the other car. So, um, what is it that, uh, what, what interpretation are we, are we looking for? I, I think that, uh, the, um, when started to, to look at this, um, uh, the zoning administrator is correct that mechanical parking isn't, uh, isn't specifically called out by the code, um, but not everything is. Um, the codes, um, and it's, it's, it's pretty typical, um, that, um, as, as your code says, uh, in the Salt Point Center Zone where we are, accessory buildings and structures are generally permitted subject to section two-ten-forty-eight. And then it's typical for communities to permit accessory structures by applying a test of whether the use is incidental and customary. What does incidental and customary mean? Incidental means that, again, it's, uh, it's, it's accessory, it's not the primary use. This is not, we're not building a parking lot, this is parking that's accessory to what is a, um, a multi-use, uh, project with, with, uh, residential and, and commercial businesses. Uh, and, and that, I think it's consistent with how the, the Poughkeepsie Code goes, because the zoning code defines an accessory structure as a subordinate or accessory structure detached from, but on the same lot as the principal structure, the use of which is incidental and accessory to that of the principal structure. These mechanical structures are structures by definition in your code because they're attached to the ground, so it is a, it is a, it is a, it is a structure. Uh, and, um, and then again, your, your, your code further defines an accessory use as a use incidental to, and on the same lot as a principal use. So we, so, so parking, again, parking not defined, uh, specifically in, in the code, so, but parking is, of course, I think everybody would agree that parking, um, is, uh, is permitted. So the question is, 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 is mechanical parking permitted? A- and, and I, I think the question is, well, is this, what, what has been called mechanical parking? Is mechanical parking parking? Is I, is I think, why you said, I think it's a simple issue, is mechanical parking parking, uh, in and of itself? So I, I included some, uh, some photos in the, uh, in the application, but I have, I found some other, and those photos actually didn't show any cars kind of on that second deck there, so I actually was at, uh, at a parking lot the other day, and I stopped my wife, I said, hang on a second, I have to take some pictures, um, uh, for the application, um, did not pass those, uh, pass those around, I didn't study. Pretty clear, I mean, if that's not parking, I, I, um, I don't know what you call it.
And, and where was this?
Sorry, I just wanted to, just, uh, give everybody a chance to, uh, to, to look at these. Uh, where was this? This was at, uh, uh, this was in the Bronx, um, this happened to be where, where I saw them. Again, the, the, um, the three, uh, places that I submitted in the original application, two of them are in operation. One in White Plains, one in the, um, um, one of the Bronx, and, uh, then the city of Poughkeepsie has recently approved, uh, one. And these are all just three locations that this particular applicant, and I'm talking about, you know, one, one developer has, uh, has approved and has, and built two of them in the process of, uh, building, building the third. Uh, we could certainly find more, I just happened to see this one the other day, which, which showed them, uh, showed them as, as, as built. So I think that's the, that's kind of the, the first question, is if mechanical parking is parking and parking is permitted, then I, I think would follow that the, uh, the interpretation is that, yes, these, these structures are, are, are permitted. But let me go, I'll, I'll go, I'll go further. Again, parking isn't specifically defined, um, but the, there are some standards for parking. If you have parking, uh, it has to be a nine-foot by eighteen-foot space, and it can't be more than five percent. Those are in sections two-ten-ninety-two of, of the code, off-street parking and loading. So again, the, the parking that we've provided meets those, meets those standards, this fits within those, uh, those, those, those dimensions. We provided the dimensions of the parking structure in, in, in the application, so I think we meet all the, all of the, the, the definitions and requirement of, of parking. And then I'll look at parking definitions, and what, what is, you know, how do you, you know, there aren't, you can learn definitions in the code, what are parking definitions, and parking definitions are what you, you, you think they are. The, I looked at a bunch of different places, um, and it's where you left your car, right? That's, that's really, where you, where you car, that's, that's parking. Uh, so the, the, um, uh, various sources of, uh, both, both online and I, and I, in a, in a, in an actual dictionary, they weren't more helpful than, uh, than, than that, that's what, so again, I think we've got, uh, I think we've got, uh, got, got, got parking because I don't know, um, what else it is. That's what, so again, I think we've got, I think we've got parking because I don't know what else it is. And then the last test, again, is, so is it incidental? Yes, it's accessory, it's not the primary use. Is it parking? I believe it's parking because that's, it seems to meet all the definitions. It is a customary, and customary is kind of a, I guess, a subjective word, but it's certainly customary and growing to be, customary doesn't mean everywhere, but it is the customary use for parking based on the examples I've shown, an additional example I showed tonight. So I'll kind of stop there, I think, and then see if there are questions that the board may have about this.
So how does the structure operate?
If I told you push a button, I might oversimplify it, but that's really the answer. But there is an operator who will operate the structure itself.
Okay. And how much noise does it make?
You know, I don't know specifically, but I would also offer that the, this was, this particular application is a, it was a coordinated review, type one action, planning board is the lead agency, and they have adopted a negative declaration and in specific referenced this mechanical parking and determined that there are no significant environmental impacts associated with that. So it isn't, you know, kind of those environmental issues, you know, do you not like how it looks or sounds, are really kind of dealt with by the planning board, not, it's not part of interpretation, I guess, that,
I saw that in the deck, but I didn't actually see that it actually addressed this.
It does reference the parking stackers in it.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, and they certainly were contemplated by the planning board when they issued their deck.
Let me ask you this, how do you, when there's two cars in there, how do you get the car from top? You have to move the bottom car out?
Yes.
So there's an attendant?
Yes.
That moves the one car out and then lowers the other car?
Yes.
And then some other attendant drives the car to the customer or the customer's there? How exactly does it work?
Yes, I think you, I think you hit it, you hit it right.
So one attendant does all that stuff, or there are two attendants, or there's a?
I'm led to believe it's one. Again, it's, I think it wasn't one of the questions asked for the interpretation about, you know, how many attendants are there?
Okay. All right, and of the research that you did for where these other ones are, how many of them are enclosed? And how many are out, like the one in the Bronx?
This specific one, the one that I gave you tonight is open air. The two I submitted previously, one is enclosed in a parking structure. The other one is hybrid, it's open air but happens to have a roof over it, but it is.
You would say it is enclosed.
You would say enclosed, I would say open. Which is fine, again, not an interpretation that we're looking for, is it open or enclosed? That wasn't part of the question asked, but that's all right.
Yeah, I think there are still two, just important to recognize that the site plan has not been completed, right? This is one aspect of the site plan review that the planning board is still undertaking, but the question is basically, is the use okay, right? That's what we're really here to answer tonight. The planning board will look at, you know, the aesthetics, they'll look at, you know, whether there needs to be screening or whether there needs to be, you know, those are all things that are still to be resolved in the site plan process. Although they're interesting, and I can't help but go to them myself when I think about this, but I don't think that's really what we are charged with doing.
Tell me this, is there a limit to the number of, your application is for two cars, but is there a limit to these, to the mechanical elevator parking structures?
Well, certainly the planning board would limit that. I think the limits are the, I don't know if you're asking height wise or area wise, but.
I think I'm telling the number of cars that would be stacked up.
Right. So on any one individual, you're asking how high? Is that what you're asking? Right.
Well, no, I'm asking how many cars, your application only has two, but in this whole mechanical parking structure concept, how many cars can you put in there? I've seen in movies and taking foreign countries, there are whole, you know, they have 15 or 20 or 100 cars in a structure that go in, delivered by elevator.
Then I guess that's the answer, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
I guess the question is, is it parking?
Okay. Christine?
Not right now, thank you.
All right. Why do they need this? They didn't plan enough parking to start with, apparently.
It's a, it's a, it's a question that goes back a couple of years, but the, as we started this process, the planning board, and by the way, in this zone, the planning board has the authority to essentially reduce the required parking to whatever they feel is enough, right? So they have, without coming to this board, it's an authority granted to the planning board, right? So there's no, again, there's no waiver of parking that's being requested here. But the planning board asked us to reduce the parking on the site at several meetings, and we reduced, reduced, and reduced, and we, there were internal conversations with the applicant and the engineers, you know, what's, you know, can we reduce it to the point where there's not going to be an impact on the users, either commercial or residential? And we even, again, this goes down to kind of the seeker review, the traffic consultant involved did an analysis of, based on the identified uses, it's, I'm sorry, it's a long answer, but I need to go through it. But the, how much parking do these users demand? And so the end of the review from the traffic consultant was that there is, at peak times, there is adequate parking for your users based on what's provided. Okay, so the planning board has taken the position, not necessarily a unreasonable position, to say, well, if everybody's wrong, maybe we need, you know, we need a relief valve. And so these, this second level of parking is the relief valve should there end up being a parking problem down the road. These are not something that are proposed to be installed today. They are something that the planning board has asked. They didn't ask for stacked parking, they asked for additional parking in the future. But that's, so it's a complicated question, do we have enough parking? We believe we do, the experts believe we do. The planning board to date has been satisfied, but they just want the ability to provide more parking sometime in the future. So sorry for the long answer, but that's.
Then if that's the case, why can't you reduce the size of the project and add more parking instead of doing this?
Correct. Again, a complicated question, not really, but this is, the question that's before this board is, is this parking?
Yes. If you're parking a car, it's parking, right?
That's, that I think is the question before this board.
Very straightforward. Okay. So as the chairman, excuse me, allergies are killing me, I apologize. As the chairman stated or questioned, I bring my car in there, he brings his car in there, we get double stacked. 11 o'clock at night, I want to go out, my car's on top, so they're going to fire this machine up and bring the cars around. There's going to be some noise involved, and you're going to have apartments and stuff there, correct? You have living quarters in that area?
Yes, it's near residential.
No more questions.
Charles?
I don't have a question at this point, I have to formulate it for myself, I'm sorry.
But it's okay, right, again, the, we're only here for this question of,
But.
Only here for the question of this interpretation, not.
So the interpretation is maybe a future use, this will be parked, this will be considered parking? Maybe, in the future?
No, for present purposes, the board should not consider the fact that this parking is not being proposed to be installed imminently. The board should be focusing on, is this parking allowed to be installed at all as part of parking?
And so maybe this is, so parking has to be functional, right? You have to be able to get in your car and leave wherever it's parked whenever you'd like to, so.
The code doesn't actually say that, but.
Well, I think that goes to the customary part, because of customary analysis.
So is it, is it functional? I don't know if I'm asking Lisa or if I'm asking the gentleman, that's.
So the, there are full-time staff at the project who will be responsible for managing the cars in and out, just as you are in the other examples that I've given you.
24 hours a day.
24/7?
Yeah.
Yes.
And just for the record, factual questions go to the applicant, because I don't have any of the answers as to those things. And the legal questions are, you know, for the applicant and perhaps I to debate if we get to put a fine point on things. But basically Jeff's right that what's before you does, don't really think of, like, the project is sort of background relevant, but any project can come through the door and ask for this, to be able to put stacked parking. And so the nuances of this particular project are not really relevant to this board's interpretation as to whether mechanical parking structures are parking.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
You may have a concern that in the future, let's say this goes in and you determine that it's parking, that in the future there may be lots of these or request for lots of these. And that's a reasonable concern. However, I would point out that, right, currently there are none. And we would probably, if this became something that were a common feature, we very likely would address it legislatively. We would like create regulations appropriate to the subject. We haven't done that because, again, this is not.
First impression.
First, it's the first time it's here, so. But I just, I think it's important that you don't base your decision on whether you think there ought to be regulations on this, because there very well may be a need for them in the future, and we may address that if that need were to occur. But that shouldn't be the basis of a decision tonight.
I would also add that the, in one sense, Mike, I think you're right that maybe they would get proposed everywhere, but that's not, doesn't become an obligation on the planning board to approve them everywhere. There's still, and again, the, go back to the, you know, the planning board decides that they want them to operate with no noise and so you can't be seen, that's certainly within their prerogative and purview to do that. But that's how the planning board operates.
But.
We're just, we're just kind of back to, is it, is it parking? And then if it's parking, the planning board is in a different position about how they apply that.
If I can just respond briefly to that, I don't know that I agree 100% that the planning board would not be, if this board were to find this is mechanical parking is parking, then I think the planning board would be constrained to allow this type of parking in other places, should applicants perceive, it's obviously expensive and, you know, has all sorts of other considerations that go along with it other than just traditional parking. But I think that, you know, there's some, if this board finds that parking, mechanical structures are parking, then they're parking for all purposes. And the planning board has its traditional site plan considerations that it could do for parking. But I don't know that it would be able to say, no, you can't have a stacked parking in this project if they allow it. If there's a determination from the ZBA that mechanical parking is just a type of parking.
Now you got the computer, so if we say it is parking, then they can go ahead with it, possibly.
Correct.
But if we say it's not parking, they can still go ahead with it? No?
If you say, if this board were to find, well, okay, so if you find that it's traditional park, it's the same as parking, then this, the applicant can go forward with it, any applicant can go forward in any location. If you find that it's not on all fours with traditional parking, then you get to the issues which Jeff has talked about, which is, you know, is it, is mechanical, are mechanical parking structures now usual and customary incidental uses to, you know, the underlying mixed use development here? And Jeff's provided some information that they are. So it's not white, cut and dry if you find that they're not, if you find that they're not, parking is parking, it doesn't end the inquiry. You still have to consider whether they are usual and customary use to, and then it would be a question, it's usual and customary to what?
In this area.
Right, and this, is it in this district, is it this type of use, you know, mixed use developments? Is it, where would it be usual and customary?
So theoretically, theoretically, if this were to be something that we say, go ahead, do it, I could put one in my driveway and then bolt the entire neighborhood. Once we say this is allowed.
If you say this is allowed, then it would go into, one of the discussions would be like your parking count, how many parking spaces you're allowed to have, the size of structures, it goes into other events, but.
It's not a structure, so we open air.
No, it's a structure, because it's a mechanical.
I thought you asked that.
It's clear that it's a structure.
But it's not an enclosed structure.
It's not enclosed.
That's what I meant, it's not a building.
Right.
But it is, it satisfies the definition of a structure.
If the board were to find that this is parking in the same way that surface parking is parking, then in theory, you could put it in your driveway. Whether anybody would want to do that, I mean, in theory, you could perhaps build a spaceship in your backyard, monetarily, it may not be feasible, but for some instances, you know, it's something the board needs to consider.
And lots of people have lifts in their driveways and garages to lift the car to work on. It's not, it's not, it's not unheard of, I think, at all.
Not around here, they don't.
Oh, I think you'd be surprised.
I don't know many exterior, but I do know there are interior lifts in garages. The exterior is a different question. Good, thank you.
There it is.
So you're saying that we should or should not consider that if we approve this, we're making it possible for someone to put it in their personal driveway?
I think it's a relevant consideration, I don't think it's the only consideration. It's possible, the question is, is it likely? And if it does, as Mike says, if it becomes an issue, then, you know, it's possible that the town board would enact legislation which says you can't have them in purely residential districts, which I think would happen, so.
Because as a structure, it would require a building permit, as all structures do, even though it's not enclosed, it does require a building permit.
And I guess, Lisa, the only thing I was trying to differentiate it from it is, it's not a variance, it's not, it's not that where if you grant a variance for a sign that's 100 square feet where 50 is allowed, that everybody becomes entitled to a 100 square foot sign. It's, in my mind, Lisa, it's different, it's a determination of, it really is a question of what is the definition of this? Is it parking or not parking? It's almost that, and if it's, if, as I believe it is, it's parking, how parking is managed in a site plan is governed, in this case, by the planning. how, how parking is managed in a site plan is governed, in this case, by the, by the planning board, because it's, that's, that's where, that's where those issues get, uh, get, get addressed, related to, um, the operations, the noise, the, the views. And that's, that's, that's kind of the, the way that it, uh, that, that, you know, in the, in the, in the commercial realm, these things are, are, are addressed.
Right, I mean, it's really, as Jeff has said, it's really not for this board to consider the noise or the attendance or the visual impacts or any of that things. It's really the, it's the easy and the hard question, is it parking?
My question really went to how similar it was to regular parking, so, difference in, well, the activities, the noise, was really what the, the purpose of my question, that's, that's...
If you hit valet parking, um, right, again, you've, you've got, and, which, uh, I was gonna say Vassar Hospital, but of course, it's not in the town, um, but, uh...
The inn at Vassar has valet parking, there's a parking plan for that site. That, that was approved by the planning board, so that's...
Right, so, that's, that's not, uh, but again, that's, it's, it's attendant-based, uh, that's not, and something new, it's still parking.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, no questions.
Tony?
No questions. This isn't really exactly the same thing as parallel parking, is it?
I, uh, I'm confused by your question.
Well, I mean, if you look at the, the driver's manual and you look at our old collective life experience, you know, we may have learned to how to, how to park on the street, how to parallel park and so on and so forth. And, uh, I don't recall anything in there about, uh, parking in a manner that we can't do by ourselves. So, it's not the same, is it?
Uh, it's more, it's, it's closer to valet parking. In fact, I guess it really is valet parking, as I, as I, as I, as I hear myself talk about it, because, um, that's really who's gonna be operating, uh, your car on and off the lift.
In your case, that's who it is. Do you see that, that, I, I believe I read someplace that in some cases, this could be self-operated.
I, I, I guess that's possible.
It's possible, right?
Sure.
So, so if it's, if that's a possibility, and I for one, I mean, I, I happen to think it's a pretty bad idea to have this kind of thing be self-operated, just in general, but that's just an opinion. But it, it strikes me as, as maybe something that maybe should be in a code someplace, defining all of this stuff and, and defining who operates it and, and, and all of that stuff.
I would like to just ask Lisa a question, I think this...
Go ahead.
So, if, if the board feels that this is parking, but it's not usual and customary, then it's not something that...
Right, then it would be a type of accessory use that's not expressly permitted anywhere and would need authorizing legislation in order to be permitted. It would be as if you had a house and you were arguing that, um, that, you know, a brewery was a typical accessory that, to a house, and the board disagreed, the brewery would not be, the, you know, brewing facility would not be allowed as an accessory use. So, yeah, we have, as, the board has, um, in the past, had occasion to talk about, um, things where people were requesting or a determination from the board that they were usual and customary accessory uses, and, that's it.
And it would have to be, it would have to go through legislation rather than...
Correct.
Thank you.
And if the board were going to decide, if that were going to be the basis of where the board was thinking, I would expect that the applicant would want some opportunity to provide additional information as to whether it's usual and customary, but that's up to the applicant, so, and I don't know where the board will come out.
Anything else? Okay, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in, in the room, anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on this application? I don't.
I'm seeing anybody.
I don't see anyone.
If you're on Zoom and just unmute yourself or raise your hand, turn on your screen, wave. Nope.
Chrissy is unmuted.
I'm sorry?
Chrissy is unmuted.
I think she's just, I don't think, Chrissy didn't want to say...
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Now, we can, yes.
Can you hear me?
Now.
Oh.
Now, we can't.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted to, this is Chrissy, the zoning administrator. The reason why I questioned whether or not I thought this was parking is because it kind of derived from, at the outdoor storage section, where it says that if it's not, if it doesn't have fully enclosed sides, it's considered outdoor storage. So, that got me thinking, well, is this considered parking? Is it considered outdoor storage? So, I mean, that, that's kind of where I was at with it.
All right, and, in, in that regard, do you know what the length of the parking would be? Is it short-term parking or...
Right, so, your question really goes to, I, I think, how is the parking used? And it's an expectation on our part for how the parking is used is that it would not be for the residences, it would be typically for employees, because that gives the operator the most flexibility in terms of when people are in and out. And, so, you know, could, could, could somebody put their car up there for three years? I, I, I guess so, but, but people could, you know, unless, unless the, the owner has a limit on, uh, on how long you can, you can park your car on the site, that's, that's, you know, it's, it's typically that, that...
Okay.
Cars come in and out, but, but the expectation is, yeah, I guess, that, that it's, it's, it's employees, because the, there's certainly plenty of parking for all the residences during the overnight time when the businesses are closed, so, uh, there's some question the planning board's mind about, is there sufficient parking during whatever the peak shopping hour is for the various uses? And those uses have different peaks, and that's, that's, that's why there's a, that's why there was a study done on that, so...
Okay. So, I don't see anyone else in Zoom as wishes to speak on this. So, based on the questions that I hear, um, I, I think perhaps it would behoove you to offer some more information on the customary use of this in parking, and so...
I have one more question.
I know, it's passed.
Is this gonna be a, a fee for this? And they aren't doing these out of the goodness of their heart, I'm sure. So, if I come in there and want to put my car on there, and, and, because that, to me, would make a difference in my decision, am I gonna pay to have my car stored there for whatever period of time?
Uh, I, I, um, I guess I have two answers. One, one, I don't know that, I don't, I don't believe there's any, um, uh, plan to, to charge for parking. But I, but I think if it did, it's still parking. And I, because I think that's the, that's what we're, that's, that's the... Specifically, that's the, that's the, that's, that's, that's interpretation. But, um, uh, you know, I, no, I, no is the answer. It's not how, it's not how a successful center would operate here. It's, it's different, maybe different in, uh, in, in different communities based on parking demands, but it's just not how it works here.
Okay, so, in that light, I think it might behoove you to, um, if we adjourn this to, to next month, for you to provide some additional information about whether it's customary? That might be helpful to us, based upon the questions that I heard. Agreeable, everybody?
Anything else I could provide?
Whatever you think is most helpful, based upon the question.
Well, I mean, I just can't, would ask the, you know, the members if there's anything in particular that would help them.
I think we need more concise answers, because there's a lot of I-don't-knows and maybes, that's what I'm hearing, that concerns me.
So, I think, Lisa has explained... Related to the site plan and the specific application, which is not really...
Okay.
What, this...
Yeah, I, I think, without any of the site plan information, it's just really a question about whether...
Right.
Mechanical parking fits into the...
For purposes of your decision, Art, imagine this on, you know, another lot, or any, and that...
That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, so...
And it's unseen and completely quiet.
Yeah, okay.
This is Chrissy again, can I speak again?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, I would say that it's either parking or it's outdoor storage. So, I guess that's what you have to decide.
Okay, anything that you would suggest that the applicant provide sway us one way or the other?
I mean, I, the, the, the definition for outdoor storage is the placing, maintaining, or keeping in a place other than a permanent structure having a roof and fully enclosed sides. So, I guess anything that just suggests that it's more parking as opposed to outdoor storage.
But isn't it a permanent structure?
What was that?
But it is a permanent structure.
It says, other than a permanent structure having a roof and fully enclosed sides.
Oh, I don't know where the comma is there, okay, all right, I'll, I'll look at that.
Yep, that's the definition for outdoor storage.
I think for the board's consideration, though, it's also possible that it's a type of parking, but not a type of parking that's usual and customary, without necessarily getting into the outdoor storage. Uh, it, it may be that it's outdoor storage, it may be that it's parking, or it may be that it's a type of parking that's not usual and customary, so...
Sure, and, and, and it certainly can't be, it can't be usual and customary in the town of Poughkeepsie, because you haven't had the question yet, so...
No, you can, you can expand it.
Right, great, so I just, I get, right, that would be, certainly, the, the answer would be, well, well, it's not, because no one's asked the question yet. Um, but then the, in the broader scheme of parking, is it, is it usual and customary? I think is the, is how I can...
But I would look for communities more similar to Poughkeepsie, not so much the Bronx, perhaps?
Sure, I, I was, I was using, again, I, the, 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 the three that I submitted were just ones that, uh, this particular applicant, because it's that, it's this particular machine, I don't even know with the one that I, that I saw, if it's the same operator or not, but that's why, uh, that those three in the White Plains, the city of Poughkeepsie and, 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 and the Bronx were, uh, were this particular machine, but we can certainly broaden the scope to look at, um, other mechanical parking and in other communities.
Right, I'd like to see that, like, communities more similar to the Bronx, okay? Any other discussion? Would someone second my...
Second.
Okay, all those favors, you go by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
That brings us item number six, EV charging stations eight twenty-five Main Street. Mr. Chen?
Hey, how are you?
Okay, just, just state your name.
Uh, my name is Kenny Chen.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
Uh, because, uh, I tried to change my restaurant to the retail store and town asked me to install the, uh, the EV charge. And I'm looking for like, uh, you know, uh, fast, uh, level-three charge, but all level-three show on the new state website, that can get a incentive with all like a big screen, like a twenty-five, twenty-seven screen, so...
Those are the other ones available to you?
I, only, I, I have to go down to the level-two.
I see, what, what are the ones that we have in the town, in the town here, Mike?
We, um, I believe they're level-two chargers, but I, I don't...
Okay.
Here at Town Hall.
Is there a reason to the level-two instead of level-three, or...
Um, I, I don't know, um, yeah.
No, I just think that, you know, level-three is fast charge, you know, level-two hundred forty watt, zero watt, and...
Okay, so...
Yeah.
All right. I, I don't have any questions, Christine, Christine?
No, I don't have any questions.
Art?
Didn't we say no to the last few that came up with the...
So, in the past, the other applicants, we've said they can't use the screen, they can't have any, you know, limitations.
I mean, they can get something on, but it has to be static, I believe, right? It can't change.
Let me ask you this, do you get any revenue or anything from the advertising on the screen?
No, I, I don't want to put out advertising, because it's not like a gas station. I, i- if the people need to stand there, they're always just parking and then go to the car or go out to, you know, restaurant or something, and come by, so, so it's not going to put advertising. Yes, you can put advertising, but I guarantee I can rather, you know, concern everything through the town, say I, I will never have advertising.
Okay, and have you seen the restrictions we put on other applicants? That you can't use the screen, there's no, um...
I, I see, I saw the, uh, town call, you have the small screen, but now it's big screen. And I told to the vendor, they say, okay, they can just show the instruction, no sound, no advertising at all. I'm glad with that, I'm happy with that, too.
Okay, and so, if we restricted it, that there's no video, no advertising, no audio, is that something you can agree to?
Yeah, but the video, I mean, if you have step-by-step, how to charge, that's okay for you?
Right, there's instructions.
Right, but, but other than, other than...
That's it, you know, everything else, advertising, yeah, I can guarantee, I can sign the concern, you know, everything agreement, you know, through the town.
Okay. All right, and you saw the response from the county in your application?
No, I think that's, that's the next step for the, the EV company, they will do the follow-up, not, not me, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you have any questions?
Me?
Yeah.
Did you have... Oh, just that, that can't have, like you said, other than the instruction manual, if you will. You can't have, you know, buy this here or anything like that, you can't, or, you can't even have... Chrissy, you there?
Yes.
So, refresh my memory, because the, it's, so the instruction manual, if you will, is probably okay, I would guess, but can they then switch, can they, can they, can they then switch to, like, scenic pictures or things like that? They can't do that either, right?
No, no.
Okay.
It would have to be static and just the instructions, no, no audio.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Phil's?
I have no questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Liz?
No questions.
Tom?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't, I don't see one in the audience. Is anyone on Zoom? All right, I'm not seeing anyone. All right, so then I'll, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor, you go by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. And again, you can wait till the end of the evening, or you can check with the zoning administrator in the morning.
Okay, cool, thank you. Okay, good.
That brings us item number seven, Six Violet Avenue. Is there someone here for that application?
Good evening, Alec Glad from the law firm Acutti and Fader on behalf of the applicant.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is truly complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
Sure, so, um, we have several members of the project team on the Zoom. I think anyone that is left is from the project team, including Mike, Sabrina, Jay, um, I forgot who else I saw that was on there. But basically, we are just seeking reapproval of the six variances that were previously granted in the year 2022 and 2023 for a three-story climate-controlled self-storage building on a five-point-one-three-acre lot at Six Violet... on a five-point-one-three-acre lot at Sixth Violet Avenue in the heavy industrial district. So this project is exactly the same as it was when it was approved, when you originally granted the variances and we received site plan approval. We're just seeking for those to be reissued. Um, so previously, you had granted setback variances, parking variances, building height variances, which was requested as part of a design change from the planning board and signage variances. And again, no change to these variances. So as to the current status of the application, uh, after we got the ZVA variances, we had received planning board approvals in June twenty of 2022, um, and they were extended in 2023. We had a pre-construction meeting with town staff in May of 2023 and received a demo permit and building permit in September of 2023. All, and some site work has begun. All previous and existing structures have been demolished and removed from the site. There's been some site maintenance, whip inspections to make sure that we're keeping up with everything. And we've also received some outside agency permits. Um, and I also want to note that there is a pre-existing negative declaration, um, for this project, because it was a coordinated review, which is still in effect. So we received county comment, um, for the reapproval already. They noted that it was a matter of local concern. We also received, uh, a few town staff memo, uh, recommending reapproval. So that's what we are here for this evening. And we are happy to answer any questions about the specific variances that you previously existed, status of the site, or anything else.
Has anything materially changed since your last application?
Nope, it is exactly the same.
And what was the delay?
Uh, they were just looking at different market factors to see if this was buildable. Um, and then basically what we settled on is the existing approval is the best option.
Christine?
No questions.
Art?
This is one right across from the DFW. Yeah, yeah, that's just one of them.
No questions. Phil's?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Tom?
No questions.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? If you'd unshare your screen? You're still sharing.
Yeah.
That's mine.
Oh, okay. All right, anyone from Zoom who wishes to comment on this application?
They're all with the project.
Okay, yeah, all right. Uh, I don't see anyone then, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, just go by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Thank you. Do we need a break, or you just want to go into deliberations?
There's only two, let's just do it.
Okay, so we can do, we can do this one. Uh, anybody have any, I mean, nothing's really changed.
No.
Christine, might I make this motion?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth in the staff report.
And also in the prior.
At all, oh, yes.
The prior approvals.
Prior approvals.
Prior findings, she's right.
Second, second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, just go by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Then, uh, I'll do eight twenty-five Main Street. See, I think there's a staff report on this one. And so this is, we're just gonna put the same restrictions that we have on the other EV. Sure, and is there a plan to change the code, or are we just gonna keep going?
We're gonna probably have to revisit this at some point, but.
Art, am I doing?
So the, the county response is just for the audio consent, right?
Uh, well, they deny the whole thing, but because, uh, we can explain that, um, we were granting it because we made these restrictions. Well, at least it says, it denies it with screens and audio, so we're saying no screens and audio, so it covers it.
You need to do seeker on this one, too, before you.
In that case. Uh, I move the ZVA to determine that this is an listed action appropriate for uncoordinated review and declare itself to be the lead agency.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, just go by aye.
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 Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And I move the ZVA to determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment or the reasons set forth in the determination, non-significance for this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, just go by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. So then, Art, am I doing, I doing this?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearings and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair, and I believe there was a staff report.
And then you need the conditions, that there are instructions only, no video, no audio, no advertising, and only a static image.
What's she saying? So move.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, just go by aye.
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 Any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right, then that brings us to item number four. Twenty-one Fairmont Avenue, the sign. What's everybody think about the sign?
It's very large, but it's, but it's smaller than what he came in with.
It is smaller, I think, I think it's inconsistent with other signs in the area. Now, all the, all the other signs in that, on that corner are, are freestanding, not monument signs. Much smaller, and I appreciate he has more names to put on it, but I don't think it needs to be a monument.
Do you think it gets smaller if it's not a monument sign?
I'm sorry?
But would the size be smaller? Because is it, the monument is not.
Hmm, the monument is not part of it.
So the changing it from a monument sign to a pole sign, I don't know that that would change any of the variances requested.
And, and also, aren't we kind of leaning toward this type of sign versus the sticking-to-ground sign?
I thought monument signs were generally preferred, but I'm not sure it says that.
I think that they are generally preferred, except that it's, it's pretty inconsistent in this area.
Because it's residential?
It's not.
Well, there's a lot of houses along.
But there's also a lot.
But there's other commercial uses in that area, right?
Right down the street, very commercial.
Yeah, right down the street, but that's a huge, you're talking about C to I?
Hello?
Are you, are you talking about?
Right next, yeah, next to the barbecue place, the new, the new structure, the restaurant or something on the corner.
Yeah, it has a little pan.
It's still, it's still, commercial, it's not all residential.
Right, but, like, across the street is, across the street is a commercial building that has that little corner sign. The, on the other corner is, um.
One pole, right, one.
Yeah, just a little pole.
Teachers, but again. I thought that in the past, we've been leaning more toward the monument-type signs for everything, rather than these open structure signs.
So county.
What about his compromise? I mean, he's willing to reduce the size and, and the height.
Right.
The size of the sign.
By the way, there's a typo in the agenda, um, and in the staff report, it carried forward, because it says it's twenty-one, you're allowed twelve square feet, and they wanted twenty-one square feet. So they need a variance of nine square feet for size, not twelve.
They should have sent us that.
And nine feet for location, but they'll, they moved the location.
From the legal notice, that's all I can tell you.
Fire whoever that was. And I think they changed the location now, that, right, the position is amended, they moved it back, it's not one foot off the line.
Not, not all the way, that was not ten feet.
Right. So it was, I think if you took the larger sign, it was four feet now, and if you took the smaller sign, it was four and a half feet from the property line.
So we would just be granting the size of the sign and not the monument and the, and the distance from the roadway.
Right, it's the size of the face of the sign and the distance, but the type of the sign is permitted. The code doesn't specify what type of freestanding sign is allowed there.
Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, he's taking great care to make it match the rest of his.
That's what he says, yeah. So I, I didn't ask him about, there are two other signs on this property.
The one on the back side of the driveway.
There's one in the, in the parking lot.
Yeah.
And there's one on the, on the street.
Can I say something to that? Because when we were there, he said he would be more than willing to take those signs down, he'd like to hang flowers off that, which I guess is probably okay. He would be more than willing to remove that, that's what he told us when we were there.
He could make it a condition.
So what size does he want now?
Take six inches, I don't know, take whatever it was.
Less feet by nine feet instead of six feet by ten feet.
And then lower by.
And then lower by.
Six inches.
Five by twelve, how much of the sign part?
Uh, I don't know, the dimensions are, are they in here?
This is three and a half by six.
That's what, uh, yeah, that's even in.
That's still twenty-one square feet.
So at least he says a nine-foot, he's looking for a nine-foot variance then?
Well, ten feet from the highway right of way, so he thought, he moved it, he said he moved it back four feet?
It depends which size of the base you're picking. If you pick the larger out rectangle of what's there, then it's four feet back, I believe he testified. And if you take the smaller one, that's another five inches in, so that would be four and a half.
He said five and a half, right? Yeah, but that's not the full, the full thing, right? Yeah, yeah.
And I believe the size of the sign, the, the face of it was twenty-one square feet, but I don't. I didn't bring my materials from last month.
So did he shorten this to five feet and shorten that?
I think if he were shortening it, though, he's only changing the base and the sides. It didn't affect the size of the face of the sign.
Right, right.
It was just in response to a comment that the monument was imposing.
Okay, okay, all right, all right. All right, so the fact that it's, it's less than, it's not a nine-foot variance any, any longer, it's, um, I guess four and a half, right? Five and a half, five and a half foot variance. If he's four and a half feet from the property line.
Yeah.
Two feet, two feet more.
Square feet, so what's? So, and then nine square feet for the sign?
Right, but the board should address, um, which, what type of mon, if they have a preference for the larger or the smaller monument. If you're going, I guess, with the five and a half foot variance, then you're going with the smaller monument base.
Seconded by everybody?
Yes.
The smaller, smaller sign.
The sign's the same size?
No, the smaller, overall dimension, smaller monument.
It's twenty-one square feet, this here. Okay. And the staff report. Let's see if we can still use the staff report.
Do you have to do seeker?
Yeah. I think we addressed your concerns on the, this staff report.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, he definitely has made it smaller and.
So he just made it small.
We think that's the minimum necessary.
Right.
And the board has no objection to the twenty-one, I assume, right?
I, I think he needs it to fit all those. All right, so then, I move that the board declare itself to be, uh, I move that the ZVA determine that it's an listed action appropriate for uncoordinated review and declare itself to be lead agency.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, just go by aye.
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 Any opposed? And one recu, one recused. Phil's recused this one.
But Linda's voting, right?
But Linda, and Linda voted, yeah. And then I move that the ZVA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the determination of not significance for this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, just go by aye.
Aye.
Passes with one recusal. All right, then Larry, might I make this motion?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance.
Item four.
Set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members.
So just to make sure it's clear that it's a five-and-a-half-foot variance, side lot variance, and a nine-foot, square foot sign variance, and there'll be two conditions. Okay, the condition being that he removes the other, uh, signs on the property.
And that the installation is the smaller monument base and lower sign.
And, yeah. This is based upon the applicant reducing the size of the monument and making it farther away from the side lot line.
What'd he say?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, just go by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? That motion carries. I don't see any other actions, so I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, just go by aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. No surprise.